Good evening, everyone. Tonight is the Town Council regular meeting, Wednesday, October 18, 2023, at 7:00 PM. Town Hall Green Room. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, visitors. Are there any visitors that would like to be recognized at this time?
You're standing right there, Wes.
Just state your name.
Okay, Sherri Smith, Beautification Committee.
Thank you. Beautification Committee. Abby? Yeah?
Abby Rockfiori, Clinton Rights Council.
Oh, perfect. All right. Item number three is the approval of the minutes from the meeting, October 3, 2023. You have a motion to approve?
Mm-hmm.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Item number four, appointments and reappointments. So we have a Human Rights Committee student member that they would like to be appointed to the committee. It is in their charge, so this is something that they are allowed to do. So they're bringing forth Anna Delaney Lopez?
Natalie Lopez.
A Natalie Lopez?
Yeah.
All right, so do we have a motion?
I may make a motion.
Could I just take a moment to like say a couple?
Sure.
Before you do that?
Sure.
Okay. Um, I got my phone, it's easier. So thank you, Town Council members, for letting me represent the Human Rights Committee. My name is Abby Rockfiori. Tonight, I wanted to talk for a moment about our newest student, our newest student rep, Natalie Lopez. Her work with Morgan Social Justice Club has been very positive. She's working with administrators to hang flags for every country represented by our Morgan families. She's an athlete, a high honor student, and she'd like to be a dermatologist when she finishes her school career. Thank you again for your time and consideration. I just wanted you to know a little more about her.
Thanks. I'll make a motion to accept Natalie.
A second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Thank you, Abby. Next up is the Beautification Committee. So they've submitted a request for an increase in membership from seven to nine, and this is something that they're allowed to do. So they basically have just come forth and requested that we increase that number. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Beautification Committee, as you know, is a small energetic group of residents whose goal is to enhance the natural beauty of the town, whether it's the geraniums on the Indian River Bridge, the large planters on the bridge in front of CBS, the redesigned native plant garden in the island behind the coffee break, or the new second-foot-long pollinator pathway, native plant border along the Indian River bank. Todd and his DPW crew have been extremely helpful in providing and delivering mulch to us for use in our gardens. The group looks forward to working with the town to identify additional areas for beautification, but then we are the hands-on people with the planting, watering, weeding, and the ongoing maintenance of the garden. And sadly, some of us are no longer spring chickens. So with that in mind, we are requesting an increase in the committee from seven members to nine members.
Great. Thank you very much. Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Great. Thank you. Item number five is the downtown vision statement. So Abby's going to give us an update. This is what we talked about in our last workshop, so we also have the information in front of us that we've been presented. So just a little update and we'll be good.
Yep. So this is just an effort to synthesize what was talked about at the workshop between the Town Council, EDC, and Planning and Zoning Commission. So what I provided with you here is just sort of an attempt at capturing all of those things that were talked about and at least trying to condense it into a short statement that we can work with. Really, the question here is, one, whether or not this is the vision that Town Council is ready, able, or willing to support. And then the second part of this is, does this vision support the projects that you want to see accomplished, right? This is the, if this is the litmus test by which we will measure projects that come before us as staff to bring to your attention, as, you know, folks are approaching you with projects and information, does this work? And so the concept here is that a lot of ideas are going to get thrown at all of us relative to downtown. Some of them will be great, not all of them are going to stick, and we need a common way to measure whether or not they're going to advance or whether or not they're going to sort of get put on the back list of, hey, that's great, but it doesn't do the work of moving this vision forward. So that's really sort of the purpose of this discussion, is to test this language against the things that you want to see actually happen on the ground. And so the idea being, you know, for every idea that comes up, is it related? Does it advance the vision? Does it have the opportunity to take away from, detract, or distract from the vision? You know, and trying to keep that process consistent is really the intent here. So, you know, taking that idea, running it through a filter of sort of a common set of questions, and if it passes muster, it makes it to the project list. And then that project list gets prioritized for whether it's, you know, who, you know, do we have any ability to do this? Is this a 30-year-down-the-road kind of thing, or is this a next-week kind of thing? You know, do we have the funding for it? Do we have the folks to maintain? What are all the different components that's going to make this thing a reality, whatever this thing is? So what I try to do is say, listen, let's take a couple of ideas and just kind of run them through, and we don't have to go through these in huge detail, but for example, there's been discussion in multiple plans and with this group about wayfinding signage. So the question, you know, does the idea relate to the vision? If we're trying to connect people in places, signage to help them find those places and to sort of make things easier for people could arguably, you know, clearly meet that part of it. How does it advance the vision? If people are confused on direction to key spaces like parking, river access, or certain businesses, and if there's not a cohesive design or program really tying all of these things together, then there's an opportunity here to both create the brand and make that connection for folks. Is there any place or concept in which wayfinding would take away from the vision? The answer, you know, that I thought would be no, but there should be coordination about that design and making sure that it is reflective of what that vision feel is. Other kinds of ideas, burying the power lines has come up a bunch. There are ways in which it may relate in terms of increasing resilience for weather events, would be aesthetically desirable, whether it would, you know, sort of showcase community traditions, coastal environment, or celebration of the arts is unclear. You know, and so again, it's, we're sort of meant to march through a series of questions for every kind of project idea to say, does it stick? Does it not stick? Is it worth pursuing? Is this a municipal effort? Or do we say, no, we, as a body, pass on this and will leave this to the private sector and then sort of say, sure, we support the concept, but it's not what we're going to work on. So it's really a matter of just trying to give some kind of framework to all of the things that are going to, that have already been proposed in the past and that will likely to, you know, continue to come your way. And then the idea here is that as we go through these ideas and these sort of conceptual things, we organize them into, you know, sort of a way of saying, okay, we're advancing multiple aspects of downtown revitalization. And so the model that I've used in here really has to do with core components of downtowns from the Connecticut Main Street Center, and it's a little bit of a more in-depth version of Main Streets across the whole country and sort of an organizational framework. So the idea being, does the project fit into one of these things after it passes the test, right? Place, economic vitality, stewardship, inclusiveness, sustainability, and connectivity. And all of these things, you kind of run through the test of which bucket does it fit in? So are we being kind of even in our approach with all the different things that kind of make up a viable and vibrant downtown area? And does it pass muster sort of with our screening questions? So that's really the concept here. You know, I thought one of the things that folks could do is maybe just take two seconds and throw out, are there particular projects that you're hoping to see advance? And does this vision give you the tools, if somebody comes with the idea, to assess it and to say, this is specific enough, or it's broad enough to capture, you know, what we're looking for? So I guess I'd like to hear feedback from folks if we're going in the right direction, because I'm a little bit worried about getting so stuck on the language of the vision that we don't move to vetting of projects and potential work. So I guess that's the, that's where I'll stop talking. And then if folks have thoughts on either the vision language itself or whether projects that you are hoping to see happen, how they kind of measure up against this language?
You have some time?
Well, I have some time.
Okay. I guess we should start then, which is, I mean, first and foremost, the vision statement. And if we're comfortable with that statement that she's presented to us, is that something that we're comfortable with? Is that something that we feel will give us enough leeway into some of the things and ideas and concepts that we want to do at the next step, obviously, which is, you know, what projects do we really want to entertain?
I would like to suggest the vision statement. Downtown will showcase Clinton's community traditions, coastal environment. I would like to suggest that we add civic pride.
Anybody have any comment on that? Comments? No? Good. Tom just wants Clint's sports shop in here somewhere, but I was trying to figure out a way we get that in, Tom. I don't know if we can. We're going to use civic pride instead. Anything else?
Yeah, so economic vitality and looking at your matrix, it's subtle in there, but not as explicit as I'd like, but I couldn't figure a way to say it downtown will be vibrant, vibrant, and maybe suggests economic vitality, right? And if you put economic in front of the word vibrant, then it narrows it too much. So I couldn't figure out how to bring out more support for businesses. Up in the first sentence, in front of the word business, if you put support, then the sentence doesn't make sense. But all right, we don't want to just welcome businesses, residents and businesses and visitors. We want to draw them, right? So maybe attract or draw residents, businesses, and visitors. And I'd like to think about how we could say, so that when we think about supporting businesses economically, they fit better. Your point that if you think of projects, I was thinking of projects, I listed some, and they fit. You could always fit them, but it would fit better if you were a little more explicit on economic vitality. The word resilient, I don't know. That word's the right word. Vibrant, inclusive, and resilient. So sorry, I don't have the right words. If you think about it, I'll try to come up with it.
I think, I mean, the resilient piece, I think, is intended to look at both, you know, sort of environmental resiliency, but also community systems, relationships, going past, you know, one iteration of the council or one iteration of downtown, you know, businesses and partnerships, that there are lasting connections that help folks weather, whether it's economic changes or, you know, sort of major catastrophes or, you know, something happening. The idea that we have a plan and a system that is strong enough to recover and weather multitudes of challenges or opportunities along the way. That's sort of the resiliency intent.
Works for me. Dynamic. I mean, we could have a whole extra, one extra sentence, because I agree with Hank. You know, I said that at the workshop, too. Like, the economic part of it is a key part of it. So we could just stick one quick sentence in somewhere in there, you know, like Clinton will promote economic prosperity or something like that, or support economic viability or some word, some sentence in there that talks about the economic development of the town.
I think you just have to be careful on the wording. You know, if you put promote, then it seems like the town's now responsible for promotion of the businesses. People, you know, so I mean, I think just--
Encourage or foster.
I mean, I get it that you want people to understand that we're here to support the businesses, but yeah, I mean--
And I think the vision, too, the vision is sort of, what do you want the result to be? When you look back and you've achieved all of the things you're trying to accomplish, all the projects, all of the, whether it's supportive businesses or investment in policies and tools that help businesses stay, grow, come, what is the end result? The vision is sort of your product that you're aiming for. And then what you do in terms of the projects and the implementation strategies, those things backfill up to that vision. But this statement is, when we look forward, we know that in 20 years, this is what we want this to look like. That's really the intent here.
Be a welcoming partner, something along those lines. I mean, making it seem like the town's partnering with this. I mean, again, the wordiness, too, and I mean, getting too much of a vision statement, then we're off all over the place, you know? I mean, I think it's got to be kind of concise, you know? I mean, I like what's here. I mean, if we can--
If the end result, if you're just taking that component and just saying the end result is economic strength, you know, so what we do in our policies and what we help promote is fostering and growing this, like, economic stability, if you will. And so, you know, if we're going to have these businesses come downtown, in order for them to stay, they have to make money and be successful. And so, you know, we'll put policies in place, like we talked about zoning or whatever we can do to help them become successful, but I think, you know, we're not talking about the town itself being economically prosperous. It's like the businesses. So we're promoting a healthy economic environment or something like that, you know? I don't know. You could word smith, but that's just what I'm thinking. And sometimes, like, I know when I was doing papers in college and I'm trying to fix words, I just say, if I add, just add a whole sentence. Just on its own, this sentence handles that topic, that's it. And it makes it a little bit longer, but makes it easier to word smith, I think.
I just struggle with the, I mean, I think it's understood, we want things to be successful. I think I just struggle with the vision of it, putting something in that on a vision, like whether we're saying, I mean, I think we all know we want them to be successful, but how do you word it so that, you know, our vision is that we make sure every business is successful, because that's a hard thing to do, because every business is different. We're going to have a number of different businesses that are down there. How do we do that for each and every business that's there? So I guess just the wording of how that plays out, I guess, is the difficult thing.
I guess maybe just to have more of a presence for businesses, because it only shows up once, and after all, downtown are businesses.
So if you get the point of what we're saying, you think you can put some words?
Yeah. So what if we said something to the effect of, anchored to the sounds since 1663, Clinton's downtown attracts, instead of welcomes, attracts residents, businesses, and visitors. Downtown will showcase Clinton's traditions, coastal environment, civic pride, and celebration of the arts. Downtown will be a vibrant, inclusive, resilient center of activity that connects, da-da-da-da. My, honestly, that's where I kind of go a little bit. All right. Wordsmithing live is not always the easiest, but what I was trying, you know, resilient center of connectivity and busy, you know? Yeah. Anyone else can jump in as we, it's that last piece of trying to weave in economic support and business activity.
That supports business and connects people in places.
Mm-hmm. Resilient center of activity that supports business and connects people in places? Yep. I mean, at the end of the day, it's your vision, and so it's got, you know, it's got to be what you want to see. I can read it back if folks need the whole thing.
Sounds good, Abby. You've got it.
Supports our businesses? Well, there never really are.
I think it's implied, you know, if they're, if they're part of, if they're in Clinton, if they're in downtown, they're part of our community and, yeah.
Okay.
Everybody else?
So that's it on the vision statement.
So that would be, and again, it's, as long as folks are comfortable that this gives you the direction, tools, and teeth that you'll need to evaluate what comes next, because it is, it's broad and it's sort of all-encompassing. And so as long as you are comfortable with that, it means we will be doing work along the way to say, you know, does this project really accomplish this? And if you have that gut feeling that it doesn't, but somebody's like, well, I can use these words to say how it fits, you know, you want to make sure that it's something that you're clear on what this means for you and what this means going forward. So that's really, you know, it could be a pretty statement.
Well, don't we still have to also remember that we've defined what downtown is? It's basically, what, about two and a half blocks? Yeah, that's geographically what--
Well, what's nice about the words is they're flexible.
Well, this is amendable, too. But if we later, if some Town Council in the future defined downtown to be something different, they could.
I mean, and the hope is that they don't. The hope is that this outlives this makeup of council, that it becomes the council as a body that get, that sort of uses this for years, that really goes forward and says, this is, and maybe, you know, the mix of activities and projects that support these may change as time goes on, and some new piece of technology comes in, or there's some other economic push, and, you know, all of a sudden, you know, there's certain kinds of widgets made in certain kinds of stores that fit into tiny, you know, storefronts that are perfect, and it's all the rage, and people want to support that. That's, those projects can change and grow, but the vision should remain pretty constant and sort of say, this is really what we're aiming for. So we're hoping that this has some longevity to it. Again, you know, for staff purposes, it helps us to be thinking five, 10, 20 years out so that when you're laying the foundation of these longer-term projects, when we're talking, you know, infrastructure and public space and funding, you know, mechanisms and all that kind of stuff, that we're trying to lay those out in a very long horizon.
Okay. Anybody else?
So that was the mission statement, and you said we could test an idea to see if it fits? Or do you want to do that at another time?
Or do you do that in your own head?
That's up to you.
No, it's council.
You know, my goal is that this vision statement is clear for you, that when a project comes and people are asking for your support for it, and there's going to be a proposal and a vote and potential funding request, that you feel like this vision can get you where you want to be. So I know everybody has ideas about what the right things to do to further goals in downtown are, and when you think of those projects that you think would be most meaningful, can you fit them into this vision in a way that makes sense in order to get the support of everyone else on this group and in the community, right? For, you know, depending on the scale of project, you know, things may go to referendum, who knows? And can you sort of march through and say, well, wait, we all agree that this is where we're going, and this project marches us closer to that goal.
So I have a very specific idea, and I'll keep it short. Beautification expands what they did on the bridge, and they put it, take it up to High Street with pots. Sorry. Yes, High Street. I won't go into details, even though the garden, club, and beautification is both willing to work on this. Would that fit?
So I'd sort of throw it back and say, how does it relate to the vision? All right? So step one.
Civic pride.
It draws people downtown, right? Beautification makes it more attractive.
Shows that we care about our aesthetics.
And then, so does it advance, so does it advance the vision?
It's more, makes it more attractive for businesses, it makes it more attractive for residents, it draws people there. I say yes. But does it become subjective?
It will. It will. And recognizing, too, which projects are a piece of the pie versus the whole pie, right? So if it's, we're going to do beautification projects, which we all recognize, you know, sort of if they're cohesive and there's a theme or a design or an overall intent, can be part of that placemaking and branding and one component of things. And so I think if you tie it in that way, it makes some sense. If it's, you know, we're going to just put some stuff out and see what happens, that's all, if it's not sort of a program, then it's maybe something a little bit different, right? And so it's sort of how much are you going to put into it and what does that look like? So when we talk about individual spots versus a program of aesthetic improvement in public space, those are two kind of different things. So just, I think, I would say, a cohesive program would make some sense. A sort of individual one-offs, they're nice, and there's nothing wrong with them, and I don't think they detract, but do they get you where, do they, do they push things along? Do they do something that's going to sort of have that recognizable impact? That's where I would be, that's where I ask the questions. So it's not, my opinion of whether or not that's the project or the thing to do has nothing to do with what gets done, it's just, I think about it in terms of, how does this build partnerships, create programs and relationships that make things go farther, and help build identity and brand for the town? And if it can do those things, great.
Yeah, that is definitely just a piece of the pie.
Yeah, yeah, right. And I think, and that's the thing, each project sort of says, okay, this is, this is where this one fits, right? And that's why we have those sort of categories of thing that say, you know, they kind of go into the right buckets so that we kind of even out the buckets and have something in each bucket along the way. So, yeah.
I mean, I think this is a longer conversation than tonight, because obviously, I think we also look at things that, I mean, I'm sure we all have ideas on what we do and don't want, and I think it would be good that if we did that in our own minds about what we think would be good for that area, and then put it against that vision statement to make sure that it does meet the vision statement. Because again, like she said, this isn't, you know, you don't want this to be a revolving door on a vision statement for what you have there, because you want it long term. You want it to make sure that the vision is something that everybody can, you know, put their arms around, know what we're going for, know what we're trying to do, and then, you know, regulations help, and then all the other pieces of the puzzle as well that we need to kind of update and do as well. So, I mean, if we're good with the vision statement, and we can sort of move forward with that, and then, you know, have further discussions about some of the projects that we want to do, make sure they fit.
Thank you, Abby.
Good with that?
Good.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
So I guess there's just only procedurally one, is there, and maybe it's a Carl question, too, is, is there an intent to sort of be a formal vote or adoption that sort of says, this is it, folks?
You should adopt it.
Okay.
Whether you want.
But you want to announce--
Well, if you want to do it now, then let her read the whole thing again, and then we can make, I mean, if we want to do that now, she can read what she has, and if we're all comfortable with that, then we can move forward with the adoption of the vision statement.
Sounds good. We can let Abby get to her next meeting.
Yeah.
Type it up later.
Okay. If you've got time, you've got three minutes.
Perfect. All right. Anchored to the sounds in 1663, Clinton's downtown attracts residents, businesses, and visitors. Downtown will showcase Clinton's community traditions, coastal environment, civic pride, and celebration of the arts. Downtown will be a vibrant and inclusive and resilient center of activity that supports businesses and connects people in places.
Would there be a motion to adopt that vision statement?
I'll make a motion.
Second? Any further discuss, who's the second?
Who's the seventh?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you again.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Item number six, Finance Director's Report. Sue.
Okay, good evening, everybody. The report is for the month of September, which is also the first quarter of fiscal '24, so the first three months of fiscal '24. Revenues for the month of September were $616,000, which would be $29.7 million to date, which is 48% of the full fiscal year '24 budget, which is tracking the same as the prior year. Tax collections make up a little bit more than half of that, at $340,000 for September, and the tax rate-- And the tax rate is 56%, which is the same as the prior year. The remaining revenues in September included $130,000 for investment income for the month. Revenues from town provided services were $86,000. State grant revenues of $42,000 were received, and other revenues of 17,000. The 42 of the state grant revenues received were the pilot, which is the state-owned property in lieu of taxes grant. That was $39,841, which exceeded what we had budgeted of two, by 2,780. And also, the elderly tax exemption of 2,000 was received, and that was as budgeted. The other revenues of 17,000 included the Wassam Trust distribution of 9,000 for the quarter, 4,000 of workers' comp insurance reimbursements, and 2,000 of ARPA reimbursements to the town for counseling services that were provided. Expenses for the month of September were 4.2 million, which is 19.9 million for the three months ending September, which is 32% of the fiscal year '24 budget, which is also the same tracking as last year. Of the 4.2 million of September expenses, 2.9 of that was for education transfers. 815,000 was the salary in fringe for the month. 100,000 was for utilities, which is the electric, heat, water, streetlights, hydrants, and the expenses are further detailed in my report. The investment balances for the town at the end of September were 36.9 million. And as I mentioned, that gave us 130,000 investment income for the month, 377,000 for the quarter. A couple of the financial institutions you'll see in the report attached did raise some of the rates again for the month of September. Fund balance, you'll see in the report, there's been no change as previously reported. And as you know, that will be updated once the audit is completed. They remain at 21.6% of fiscal year '24 expenditures, which is 4 million over the town policy of 15%. The contingency is 329,500. That reflects the 10,500 transferred for the fire marshal vehicle. And ARPA spending in the month of September was 78,955. Funds were either spent or committed during the month. And as of September, 1 million of the total ARPA grants received have been expended or committed to. And my report details that further in the back. Other things, just to report to you, the fiscal '23 closed. The orders have the town and the Board of Ed final trial balances. We've complied with all additional supporting documentation requests that they've asked, including everything they want for the financial statements and other further disclosures. We're just waiting on them now for any additional information that they need. That concludes my report for September. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
Sue, the, at the very beginning of the report, the taxes, 610 more in three months than we had last year. Did the grant list grow considerably? How do we have that 610 more than this time last year?
It would, it would be for timing. I mean, without analyzing it in detail, it could be timing as far as people paying their taxes. But percentage-wise, worth the same for collections in total. Are the same as percentage of budget.
There's, there's some other variances, too, but you think they're all timing? Education, education budget, year-to-date through September, 7.5 million. Last year was 6.9, so it's 500.
It's always timing, and it has to do with how they pay their expenses.
Fire department repairs, that's...
Yeah.
Small dollars, but big percentage-wise.
So, with respect to ARPA, I don't remember. I was just looking on here. So, just, can you remind me, did we use all the money from the first tranche? Has that all been used up?
No, it was all committed for projects, and some of those projects are in process still.
And so, I know we have a deadline. So, we have, is the deadline the same for the first tranche and the second tranche, or the...
Yes.
Yeah. And when is that?
December 31st, 2026.
So, we have, we have a couple of years.
Correct.
Maybe, you know, not now, but maybe sometime in the future, you know, we, we could revisit that and just see if there's people that haven't used it, if there's something we can do, like reach out, send letters. I don't know if you're already doing that. But, you know, just to make sure that we don't let that money expire on some groups that aren't using it and don't ever plan to use it. Maybe it'll be just a reminder for them, you know, maybe like a year from now or something.
Anybody else? Any comments for Sue? Questions for Sue? All right. Thank you, Sue.
Thanks, Sue.
Thank you.
Item number seven, Chairman's Report. I have nothing to report this evening, so we'll move on to the Town Manager's Report.
You have my written report and the agenda packet. So, a couple of items to follow up on, the possible peddling ordinance change. So, I know you, there was an individual who wanted to see the ordinance amended prohibiting solicitation on all legal holidays. There has been some back and forth. And as I've related before, we did do some research on other towns. The limitations that seem to take place in the state of Connecticut, either there aren't any, or it's by hours. And limitations that pass legal muster have to have a tie to a specific and legitimate government purpose that cannot be otherwise managed without the restriction. So, the legal standard is really more to allow these people to knock on doors, because public may want to receive whatever is being communicated. So, the limitation on hours is normally tied to a crime prevention strategy. So, solicitation usually ends at sunset, so you don't have people walking around neighborhoods knocking on, knocking on doors at night. So, to have that applied to holidays is tougher. So, some of the back and forths I've been having with the town attorney is looking more at specific holidays where there might be more traffic, more people traveling. And therefore, we don't want to encourage what could be viewed as potential criminal activity, knocking on doors when people are traveling. So, it wouldn't be all holidays. It would be specific to some holidays that have already been documented as things when people are traveling, like Christmas and Thanksgiving, Fourth of July, Memorial Day, Labor Day. It wouldn't necessarily be Columbus Day. So, it would be a narrow, very specific holiday tied to the government purpose of trying to ensure or prevent criminal activity. So, that would have to be the methodology that could go forward. It wouldn't be a blanket forbidding it on all holidays, which is what the request was. So, if that's, if that's where the council's comfortable with, I'll continue to work with the town attorney on what that would start to look like for a potential ordinance.
I mean, that seems to be that, so the legality of all of that as well, right? So, I mean...
Well, you never know until somebody challenges.
That's what I'm saying, right. So, I mean, opens you up to call that.
We are, we are trying to respond to the request, but you just can't do it the way it was simply created because of the legal standard that we have to meet. So, legal standard, we have to, what is the legitimate government purpose of putting in a regulation? That's the question that has to be answered. That's a tougher, more, less subjective question than the downtown vision statement. It's a little more on point. The West Main Street sidewalk project, still waiting for feedback from the DOT as well as their consultants before we do anything related to that project. Our first step would be a very structured procurement that the DOT wants us to follow. There's some feedback that we need to get from the department in terms of what that would ultimately look like. But I'm not going to do any procurement until I have actual documentation from the department with the award of funds. I'm not going to advance based on some engineer's commitment to go forward. Fish ladder project is included in the report. Again, just to give you an awareness update. So, when the Indian River Shops was approved, included in that was a parklet that was supposed to be conveyed back to the town. That was part of the original approval. When the town meeting approved the sale of the Morgan School. So, that land conveyance is mixed up in this fish ladder project for who's going to own what property, and then sort of a public access component to being able to see migrating fish going up the fish ladder. So, we're also trying to get the dam in the hands of the water company, since they have a vested interest in the dam and not in the hands of the Indian River Shops. So, there'll be some real estate transactions that we're trying to iron out. It shouldn't impact the parklet coming back to the town unless there's some sort of easement for access that the water company needs across the parklet in order for them to be able to access the dam, or for the public to move through our property to someone else's property in order to view the dam and migrating fish. And RFP process with the library is still in a drafting stage. Make sure that I'm capturing the anticipated scope of work out of the library and trying to get some specifics around what they're, what they're looking for. Beyond that, I have something to discuss under Personnel and Executive Session, and that's it for this evening. Questions?
What's the timeline on the sidewalks? How long will that take?
To construct?
Yeah.
The only benchmark I have is the sidewalks, which are going in that direction, which were approved, the sort of a similar delivery system with the state, and the Department of Transportation was doing right-of-way acquisition, which is what we would have them do here. So, that project has been going for four to five years at this point in time, and we're still waiting for concrete to be poured. So, that would be potentially a similar timeline going in that direction.
Then an unrelated question. Now, River Valley's transit, that the bus, they're talking about replacing the trolley?
Correct.
And, but that, where does that money come from? Where does River Valley get their funding? State?
They, they get a combination of state and federal dollars that, which pays for buses.
And they're looking at putting buses in Shoreline East because of the cutting of the rail lines?
They're not. It's part of a conversation with the DOT, and the DOT likes to use River Valley Transit to pilot stuff. So, they're looking at them for how a study could be done to figure out whether buses make sense. All of the planning that the Transit District has done around routes and timing and the like was all based on Shoreline East not having service cuts. So, now that there are service cuts, does it make sense for buses to be in that mix? You don't really have a rapid bus system that exists in this area that would bus people on 95 and get them to some other collection point. That kind of exists a little bit on Shore, or on Metro North, but nothing of that sort exists here. So, it would need to be studied. So, it's not going to be an immediate bus replacement when the state cuts rail service. And that's already in the state budget, so that cut is happening one way or the other. It's just a matter of what trains and on what schedule.
The hearing for Sunday buses, is that a town hearing, or is that a state?
That would be a Transit District hearing. So, that was in their plan to expand service. That was part of why the state gave them money to consolidate nine-town transit with Middletown area transit. And this is part of a general service improvement. It's been requested in the past. The funding will be there to support it now. So, they have to hold a public hearing to amend their service schedule. Expectation is that the public will support it.
Thank you.
Any interest in the Human Service Director job?
We're be advertising again.
Okay.
Anybody else? Good. Thank you, Carl. Item number nine, Council Discussions. Anybody have anything to discuss tonight? Good, good, good. Look at us. Item number 10, Town Council Committee Liaison Reports.
Next week.
Look at this.
Hey, police meeting was Monday, and we had our own little workshop.
That's okay.
I meant, we had the parking wreck special meeting last night, and, you know, they, we have four projects going on, and they're all, the turf is the one that's furthest along that I think the contracts signed are pretty close to being signed. So, that's good. And then the other ones are, are moving along, but they, you know, there's going to, they, they're coming across things that have to be worked through, so, but they're in their early stages. So, nothing to really report on that.
But those are all ARPA?
Yeah.
That's good.
Well, yeah, there's, the one is the, the $55,000 grant that they got. There's still money that there's, can spend for that, but the rest of it's all ARPA. The bleachers, the turf, the bleachers and the scoreboard together, the turf, the bathhouse, and...
Pickleball.
Pickleball.
Better not forget pickleball.
Yeah, you forgot pickleball. Good thing there's not a lot of people.
That's a million dollars there.
Yeah.
Should have been, should, that one coming out of the gates. All right, anybody else?
All right.
He was barely, they did not have a pool board.
So, they...
But they're continuing discussions on putting together, I guess, groups of people now based, based on...
Yeah, they have their outreach plan, program that they're going to talk to the businesses. And they have organized, they've listed who they're going to talk to, what they're going to say. So, there's another meeting in two weeks to divvy it up, the businesses they're going to go to, who's going to go where. And that'll start in another month, maybe, or less.
Good? All right. Need a motion to, item number 11, Motion to Go Into Executive Session?
Don't move.
By Carol and Mary.
You got it.
Second?
Go for it.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?